Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the City of Tucson Planning Commission. My name is Chuck Martin. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Responsibilities of this body are to advise Mayor and Council and the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policy-specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. I'd like to welcome a new Commissioner, Chris Ortiz-Epinho, to the Commission and thank you for volunteering to serve the community. I know Chris professionally, and I was wondering if you could, Chris, if you could tell some of the other Commissioners a little bit about yourself before we get started?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm a transplant to Tucson. I've been here for about five years. Graduated from the Master's Program at U of A in planning. After that, I worked with, as a council aide, with Councilmember Kozachek for about 18 months. And then moved over to the private sector and started working with the W L B group and as a planner, land planner. I had a short stint working with Chuck and over the summer, and I'm currently working with T E P as an environmental land use planner.
Thank you. Will staff call a roll, please?
Chair Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Gast?
Here.
Commissioner Fink?
Here.
Commissioner Cassidy? Absent. Commissioner McRide Olsen?
Here.
Commissioner Pafford?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Saylor Brown? Absent. Commissioner Wellitt?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz-Epinho?
Here.
And Commissioner Lucia?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. As, I would like to request that item four on the agenda be moved to the, after item six, so that all the Commissioners can be informed about staff announcements and future agenda items. I don't know if I need a motion or if I just request that, but...
Hold on. Perry is, uh... Do you mind providing a little clarification on that? Would, uh, would we have to do a vote, or is it, I think it's within the purview of the Chair to be able to move an item? Is that correct?
I can check on the, the rules, but, um...
Yes. That's never been a problem. Feel free to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item is item two on the agenda, approval of the legal action report for January, January 27th, 2021. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the legal action for, action report for January 27th, 2021.
So moved.
Second?
Who, who is the second?
Lexi.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor recommending the side of the Mayor Council say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, uh, item will be recommended in Mayor Council. The next item is item three, review timelines, U D C text and amendment. Let staff please provide their presentation on item three.
Um, yes, actually, Chair Martin, we do have two new Commissioners, which may want to introduce to the, uh... I think we had Chris, but I'm not sure if we introduced Commissioner Lucia.
Mr. Lucia, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here when, early in the meeting.
That's all right. Um, and actually, it's, uh, it's Lucia.
Lucia, sorry.
Okay. Sorry.
No worries. Um, yeah, so, um, I, I'm, uh, been living in Tucson for just a little over two years now. Live over in Miramonte, and I'm on the Miramonte Neighborhood Association, and, um, I, there is a kind of call for, for people to get involved in the Planning Commission, and, um, uh, anyway, so I put my name in for it and talked to Steve Kay about it, and here I am. So, um, my background is I work for Technicians for Sustainability, which is a solar company here in Tucson. I work in design and sales in both residential and commercial capacity. And, uh, I'm excited to be here, and, uh, it's the first time I've, I've participated with the city in this way, and so I'm excited to learn a lot and get involved.
Well, thank you for volunteering to serve on the Commission and look forward to maybe meeting everybody in person again on these days, so...
Excellent. Thank you. All right. I'm just gonna share my screen real quickly here.
With the cap?
Uh, yeah. Okay. Okay, so item number three, Development Review Timelines. This is a review of the proposed text amendments to the Unified Development Code related to review timelines to support the implementation of a new permitting system here in the Planning and Development Services Department. This is the study session, and I'll go through this item with you. So, um, give you a little bit of background on this, on this amendment that's coming to you. So this is related to our new permitting system, which is called EnerGov. Back in 2018, the City of Tucson, we contracted with Tyler Technologies to build and implement a new permitting system. At that time, we started the process and kind of going through and really getting things ready to kind of make that transition and build the system. So between 2018 and 2020, the city worked with Tyler, the company, to develop this new system. And we now have an anticipated go-live date with that new permitting system of June 2021. While we were developing this, there were several process changes that were identified to, uh, to be made prior to its implementation. Um, one of those actually, a couple of them have actually already come to you. One was related to notification, the notification text amendment that we, uh, that was ultimately approved by Mayor Council in the beginning of 2020. There were also some amendments related to signs that allowed for the implementation of that system that came through back also early 2020. So this is another one of those coming through. January 5th, uh, we did get Mayor and Council, uh, help, Mayor Council Study Section, where they directed us to proceed with code amendments related to this new system to improve the efficiency and cross-departmental coordination of development-related services. So, um, since that January date, we have gone and we presented, um, this concept to, um, stakeholders. We're gonna get your feedback here, and then we'll be going back out to a couple stakeholder groups as well just to make sure that they're aware of the changes that we are proposing related to this. Most of this is really, uh, pretty procedural, and the goal here is to have a development timeline that, um, is roughly the same as what it was previously. It's just, um, making a, uh, making a change through the code to make the permitting system work. So, um, review timelines in the Unified Development Code. The issue here is the EnerGov permitting system is being implemented, and it has the ability to track in either calendar days or business days, but not both. So, um, in order to do this, uh, it, we needed a Unified Development Code that had one or the other and not both, and our Unified Development Code has both calendar days and business days. So, um, for us to go live in June, um, we need to amend the Unified Development Code, so that it's only said, it only lists those development timelines in, um, in calendar days. So, um, just to kind of go over this and let you know, uh, the proposed amendments that we are bringing in front of you tonight, um, the first one really is amend the review process timeline to be listed in calendar days, so they're roughly the equivalent to what they are currently. Um, second is to amend the definition of days, so that it no longer clarifies that less than 10 days is a business day and 10 or more days is a calendar day. So you will see if, in your materials, um, we had a table that we had provided to you of all the different timelines. There are quite a few. Um, and then there's text where we went through and made those adjustments, um, where it was in business days and may, and changed those to calendar days. Roughly what we ended up doing was, for a lot of them, just adding two days to account for those weekends to get to where, where we're at with the amendment. So, as an example of, um, of a couple of those amendments, you know, this is just pulling a few of the different ones, um, related to notice decision required. For, uh, this was for an appeal for the Board of Adjustments. Notice this decision shall be mailed within, instead of three days, it becomes five days of the decision, uh, the person who receives the notice. There was another one related to administrative enforcement, uh, related to signs, and that one goes from five days to seven days. Um, and then down here is really the, the, the final change beyond all the different development timelines, and that's related to days and the definition of days. So it's, um, removing the portion that was related to business days. So, it says here, when, you know, when the designated period of time is less than 10 days, intermediate Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays shall not be included. So we remove that portion, so you end up counting all of those days from now on. So that, that really is the gist of the, uh, the text amendment that we're bringing in front of you, um, related to this. And, um, with that, uh, we will entertain any questions, and we're, uh, looking to bring this back to you for a public hearing on April 7th in 2021.
Uh, thank you, Daniel. When I looked at it, it looked like it was pretty much divide by five and multiply times seven, so... Routed out to a reasonable number, so, uh, I'd like to open this up for any questions from Commissioners for staff.
First of all, I'd like to let everybody know that I just joined the meeting. It was having difficulty getting into the meeting. This is Thomas.
Welcome, Thomas.
And I had a question.
Okay.
I was looking, it seems to me it'd be really easy for everybody to understand, especially people like me who have had confusion with this before. You just had a little note at the very top that stated all timelines are noted in calendar days or, or something like that. Then you don't have to go down to the tables and see all of those calendar days mentioned, because then all of a sudden I'll see all those calendar days, and I'll go back up and I'll say, well gee, I wonder if this was a calendar day here or not. So that way you can get rid of the word "calendar day" all the way through.
Thank you, Commissioner Saylor Brown. That, that makes a lot of sense. We will look to do that.
Do we have any other questions? Hearing none. I don't know if anybody has their hand up, Daniel, or...
Um, I do not believe anybody has their hand up.
Okay, um, with that completes the discussion. I'm gonna open this up for a motion to set this through for a public hearing on April 7th, 2021. Can I get a motion, or?
I'll move.
A second.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. All those in favor for setting this for a public hearing on April 7th, 2021, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The review timeline text amendment, U D C text amendment is now set for a public hearing on April 7th, 2021. The next item would be staff announcements, number five. Please, would the staff please provide any PDSD updates to the Commission?
This is Scott Clark, Director of PDSD. At this point in time, I don't have anything that's related directly to the Planning Commission. PDSD is continuing to modernize, so you're seeing your permit system come on board. When we reoccupy, which we're projecting to start doing sometime in April, you'll see the new Tucson Development Center is about ready to be open. So, once we're through this, you'll have a state-of-the-art permitting system, a state-of-the-art one-stop-shop, and then we begin to restaff. So I've been authorized to take us up to 64 personnel. We're currently authorized 56, so we're adding eight. And, uh, so that should help us with our review timelines and the effectiveness we have for the Planning Commission. That's all I have for you right now.
I know from the outside, the first floor looks pretty nice, but...
That is the artwork of Clayton Trevillin coming to life. He's, he's done a fantastic job.
Thank you, Scott.
You betcha.
Next item number six is future agenda items. Um, I know part will depend on what we do with the last item, but, uh, if you could let us know what we're, what's projected for the future.
I guess, Chair Martin, so, um, and the Planning Commission. So we, uh, just set the EnerGov process kind of text amendments for the timelines. That'll be back to you for a public hearing on April 7th. We are, um, depending on, on how, you know, the study session, next, the next study section comes, we are looking to do a public hearing next week on March 17th related to the medical and adult use marijuana text amendment. We do have some informational items that we do still want to get back to you with. It's been a little crazy with COVID and things of that sort, so that is something we do want to continue with in the future, just related to kind of, you know, some of the planning efforts that are going on in the city and, and university. Um, and then, uh, we are working currently on accessory dwelling units, which we anticipate bringing to you for a study session in the next handful of months or so.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay. The next item was item four, medical and adult use marijuana, U D C text amendment. I know we had some Commissioners that had to recuse from the last meeting, so...
So this is Thomas. I'm gonna recuse myself.
So, based on the last meeting, you'd be requested to leave this meeting, and, uh, you have to leave the room, but that means the Zoom meeting, I guess, this time, so...
Chair Martin, this is Chris Gast. I also request the same.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair Martin, this is Commissioner Wellitt. I too request to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that, uh, may feel that they have a conflict of interest regard, regarding this agenda item?
Let me understand, Chuck. This is Thomas. Let me understand. Did you say I don't have to leave the room?
Oh, you do have to leave the room.
Oh, well, good. Okay. Take care, guys.
Good night.
Dan, do we still have an intact quorum?
Muted, I think, uh...
Yes, I apologize. Um, we do have a, we do have a quorum. We have eight, eight members that are here.
Uh, I would ask the Planning Commission to refrain from getting engaged in e-commercial activities where you may, uh, have a fiduciary interest in local Tucson marijuana until you've heard this at the public hearing and voted on it. After you've done all that, feel free to invest in whatever you need to, but we have the bare minimum of Planning Commission to get this through, so, uh, please proceed, Dan.
For those, for those new Commissioners, uh, two of the people work for marijuana, people doing marijuana construction and siding, another person invested in a dispensary. So those were the types of conflicts that we had at the last meeting, so...
Well, sorry.
Excuse me?
I, I apologize. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Chair Martin.
So, would staff please provide their presentation for item number four, medical and adult use marijuana text amendment?
First, thank you, Chair Martin. Thank you, Commission, for, uh, for this opportunity. Item number four is the medical and adult marijuana text amendment. This is the review of the U D C, um, and, uh, proposed changes related to this item, and this is a study session. So, give you a little bit of background on, uh, on marijuana regulations in the city of Tucson and where they've been. These were all previously with, um, with Proposition 203 related to medical marijuana. So, uh, November 2000, uh, 2nd, 2010, voters approved Proposition 203, legalizing medical marijuana. In November 23rd, 2010, Mayor and Council adopted, um, medical marijuana zoning, uh, zoning regulations. Just a little bit of background on that. Uh, it was based off of a model ordinance developed by Arizona League of Cities. So you'll see very, you'll see a lot of similarities between our regulations and what is in the rest of the state, because many of us utilize that as a basis, but things have changed over time. So you'll see, um, in September 9th, 2014, uh, Mayor and Council adopted revisions to the regulations related to that. So they, um, they removed the size limits for off-site cultivation, uh, locations in the I-1 and I-2 zones. In, you know, February 23rd, 2016, uh, Mayor and Council adopted provisions to regulations related to, uh, you know, permitted size of off-site cultivation facilities in C-2 and C-3. It, the, uh, we changed the, uh, the size from 3,000 to 4,000, um, and then we, uh, we basically adjusted some of the setbacks related to existing dispensaries. Um, and then finally, back in, you know, January 8th, 2019, uh, Mayor and Council voted 7-0 to remove the sunset date related to medical marijuana. Um, and then at that time, we approved some amendments related to odor mitigation and, uh, adjustments to the lobby size required for, um, for those medical marijuana dispensaries. So, um, just to kind of speed a little bit on Proposition 207, which was the Arizona Smart Act. This was a voter-approved initiative that passed in the November election here. Statewide vote, uh, related to that passed C-2, probably 50 to 40. Those numbers in Pima County were a little higher. It was like 64 cents in Pima County, a little under that, um, related to, uh, that vote. So, that's others, uh, and, um, some of the key items related to that Proposition 7. Uh, one was it, uh, it allowed for limited marijuana use and cultivation by adults 21 and older. It does allow for personal possession of marijuana plants, so you could have six plants for a single person, 12 for two or more. There is a, um, related to the distribution of these adult-use licenses. It is given to existing medical dispensaries, and I'm a little bit more about this, but, um, most of those by now have actually distributed and issued. And then Arizona Department of Health Services, uh, is setting up additional regulations and laws related to this, and they need to have them done by April 5th. I do not believe they are complete yet, um, but they have them up by April 5th. So, um, then, then these final two, which are, I think are, are important. One is, um, new municipal adult use regulations shall not be more restrictive for, uh, than the current medical marijuana regulations. So we're limited in what we can do, um, for the adult use, um, for, and how we regulate it in the city. Um, and then just related to kind of, um, you know, new dispensaries, new licenses, there will be, there will be an additional 26 social equity licenses that will be distributed statewide. So, uh, this is based on, you know, 10% of pharmacies in Arizona. Preference real, uh, these are for underserved applicants from cities that are disproportionately affected by enforcement of previous marijuana laws. This will kind of give you an overview of the different types of marijuana licenses that there are. It gets a little confusing, um, but there really are three types. There's the nonprofit medical marijuana license. Um, this is the one that we had previously. There are 130 of those that are currently issued by Arizona Department of Health Services. They are looking to, uh, issue 12 new licenses to underserved areas, so this won't affect Pima County. Uh, this, these are, like, the Cochise County, you see, I think they're, they're, they, they are eligible to have one more license. A place like Santa Cruz County that may not have any, that would be eligible to have. So, uh, if you live in a county, or if you're in a county that has either one or zero, life, current medical licenses eligible to have additional. New medical licenses must remain, uh, in a location for a certain amount of time before they locate. Um, and then they have that ability to apply for an adult-use license, converting it to a dual-use license. So, that's, that's the kind of strict, kind of nonprofit medical marijuana. There is the medical establishment license, which is essentially adult use. There are, most, if not all, will be dual-use, will be, uh, the one I'm talking about in the third category, but in this category, um, these are related to really the 26 standalone adult-use licenses to be issued through that social equity. So, zoning regulations, uh, again, for this can't be more strict than medical marijuana regulations, um, and those are limited to a, to a certain amount. As it relates to Tucson for this, um, it, it, this is statewide with 26, so chances are we're looking at two, maybe three or four of these licenses being in the Tucson area, um, related to that. Um, and then there's the dual-use licenses. Um, as of now, uh, there are 28 that have been approved by Arizona Department of Health Services. There are 130 medical, I believe, 100 medical marijuana licenses, so most, if not all, have, have all, um, applied for their adult-use license and have received it. But there will be new ones that will be coming on board in other counties, but not in, not in Pima County. And again, uh, zoning regulations for adult use cannot be more restrictive than comparable medical regulations. Um, I did want to talk a little bit about, um, the social equity licenses. So currently, the, the, the Mayor's Office is, is, and looking for, for, um, really what our role in this, this city may be related to this. And this is just kind of some information. Um, again, 26 licenses. They are currently drafting the rules for this and the distribution of these licenses. There isn't any timeline related to it or anything of that sort. I've heard some talk, maybe December or things of that sort, but, um, but they will, once, once they have those rules in place, they will begin accepting applications for those, uh, within six months of adopting the final rule. Tucson's role related to this, that kind of just the way we've seen it, we've been talking to our kind of city attorneys and, uh, on the, um, is really, uh, during rulemaking, uh, the city, you know, we, we may provide input to Arizona Department of Health Services to the rules related to issuance of licenses. We review sites for patients, uh, for compliance with local zoning regulations. So as long as, we, we don't know the rules yet, but, um, with anticipation that the process will be at least somewhat similar to how they deal with medical, um, the medical licenses and new medical licenses. We anticipate reviewing the sites for social equity applications. Review development proposals and construction documents for adherence and including zoning and building codes, and then issuance of building permits and building, building licenses and things of that sort, when we need to actually, uh, build their, their dispensary. Um, so those are the social equity licenses. Again, we're, we're, you know, this is being explored right now as far as what, you know, what, what, what our role, something of this sort, um, related to that. So, um, that's kind of the, the, the Proposition 207. We did want to kind of just go over a little bit of comparison of medical marijuana regulations in Arizona. This is one of those things where you'll see a lot of similarities, as I had spoken to earlier. That really is mainly because they all originated, or most of them originated from that model ordinance that was developed. But, you know, currently, we have a 1,000-foot limit here. We allow for it in our C-2 and C-3 zones, not our C-1 zone, um, so it's more of the more intense commercial. Um, and then we have setbacks, uh, currently that are 2,000 feet from dispensary, 1,000 feet from schools, childcare, substance abuse, and churches. You'll see that throughout the state, there's really pretty, as, as things have changed over the last 10 years, there's become kind of a, a bit of a wide range on some of these. So, um, you know, dispensary size, uh, you know, some places have no, none. Some places have a small dispensary size where it's 2,000 in Valley, or it's 2,500 in Chandler. Some places have, um, have, have pretty wide separation distances, and others, others have actually gone to, you know, 500 feet for some of these, like they do in Flagstaff. So there is really a wide range of this. We will talk a little bit about drive-throughs as we come through here, um, and, and that is, um, something that we don't see permitted elsewhere, but, um, is something that we're, we, we will be discussing. Um, and then again, you know, just some places, again, no size limit. It, it just kind of runs the gamut. But most of them are kind of in line with us, commercial-industrial kind of areas for those. So what are other cities doing related to adult use, um, and adult use, uh, regulations? So, um, there are several communities that have passed ordinance to restrict adult use. Mainly it's adult only is what we're looking at. Existing medical facilities that are converted to dual-use will still be able to operate there and will be able to operate, um, at adult, uh, adult-use sales. Some of those, Gilbert, uh, where they, they prohibited the adult use, and then Oral Valley, Mesa, Chandler, Scottsdale have limited it to dual-use. Um, we've seen other communities pass some regulations recently as well. So Phoenix, um, expanded their, their dispensary size. This was early on. This was in anticipation of this. This was in the fall. Their dispensary size from 2,000 to 5,000 square. Um, their dispensary size from two thousand to five thousand square feet. Um, Tempe, uh, expanded their dispensary size just, I think it was like two weeks ago, um, from five thousand to ten thousand square feet, which is, as, as you'll see, is, is kind of in line with what, what we're thinking for dispensary size. Um, and then there are a lot of other communities that are currently reviewing their code. Um, what, in conversations I've had with other communities, they're kind of looking at their medical regulations and then making adjustments based on, you know, community needs and what they see, what they see the, the changes should be. Um, so steps taken to date and how we've gotten to where we are. Um, so back in September, we went to mayor and council for a first study session. This was kind of a, uh, an issue that had kind of two sides to it. One was anticipation of the adult use in Proposition two oh seven. The other portion of it was COVID-related issues and, um, social distancing and, and making sure that, uh, the environment was safe for the patients that were utilizing these, these dispensaries. Um, so we got some guidance from, we went back and we looked at, uh, you know, trying to figure out some temporary measures that would allow for that additional social distancing. Um, things like allowing for curbside, curb, curb side pickup, allowing for temporary use of drive-throughs, um, lobby expansion. Um, and, and we proposed those, um, with, with, you know, back to, to, to mayor and council. Um, we held a stakeholder meeting to discuss those proposals, um, and get feedback on that, on the temporary measures. Um, and then eventually referred back to mayor and council on those on November seventeenth. Um, on November seventeenth, by that point, uh, Proposition two oh seven had passed. Um, so we got additional guidance from mayor and council, um, to move forward on, on the adult use kind of revisions to our code. Um, and then also kind of solidify those, those temporary changes related to COVID issues. Um, from there, we held a second stakeholder meeting, um, discussed and got feedback on the adult use regulations. And then back in January, um, eleventh and twelfth, we held a couple of public meetings. Um, so there were eighty-two, eighty-nine people that attended between the two sessions. Um, and we reviewed potential changes to the Unified Development Code related to dispensary size. We talked about odor mitigation. Uh, we talked about manufacturing, um, and the new manufacturing use that comes along with us. Um, and that, a lot of that, most of the, the feedback from those, from the stakeholder meetings and public meetings has informed our proposal here. As you'll see, uh, we've had a few things that have kind of developed since then that have added to some of, some of the additional kind of suggestions. But, um, but that's, that's where most of the, um, the proposal will come from. Um, so mayor and council direction, uh, begin the process, uh, uh, back on September ninth, they said to begin the process, uh, as, you know, in the event of, of, of this being, um, passed. Um, and then on November seventeenth, uh, really staff was directed to, um, look at specifically expanding total lawn dispensary size to allow for concerns with social distancing and being able to operate, uh, with the increased traffic that was related to Proposition two oh seven. And then staff should review, we were told, to review what's happening in the Phoenix area, use it as a guide and then find something that's kind of, you know, that's reasonable essentially. So, um, some of the feedback from those public meetings, we, as I said, we've discussed several of these topics. Um, one of those was that the current maximum dispensary size of four thousand square feet, um, and the limit on secure, so secured storage. So there's a five hundred square foot limit on secured storage, um, are significant limitations and they need to be addressed. So once you put in, you have your, um, medical use and your adult use. You increase the amount of customers, you increase the amount of patients, uh, as well for medical, um, coming into those facilities. Um, and really there, they were already kind, kind of bursting at the seams with a lot of people, even, you know, there's been growth year over year. And this, this was creating some issues. Um, odor mitig, uh, so odor mitigation requirements, um, from, from our, uh, from discussions that we've had, uh, previous prior to this and from the, from those meetings, um, that our odor mitigation requirements just really aren't particularly effective. Um, there have been some issues with some, some facilities, uh, in, 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 some facilities related to this. Um, new standalone manufacturing as defined by Arizona Smart and Safe Act needs to be addressed. So, um, in the past, uh, manufacturing was kind of with, it was a use that was part of the offsite cultivation, um, land use. Um, and, but it calls out a specific standalone manufacturing use. Currently you can do a standalone manufacturing use as a, um, as an offsite cultivation facility, but it is, uh, all offsite cultivation use, but it is a little confusing. So it's something that, that, that came out of that that needed to be addressed. Um, and then it was suggested that we, we may want to look at setback requirements, um, with the planning commission, um, and that they're, they are very limiting. Um, so, uh, and, and, and I actually went back and, uh, listened to the conversation that we had had back in two thousand and nineteen when we, uh, when, when the commission recommended to remove the sunset date. And, um, and there was discussion back then about, you know, next time it comes back, look at the, you know, we should look at these setback requirements and see if, if, if they do need adjustments. So that, that, that was a suggestion that came out of that meeting as well. Um, so, um, so related to, um, kind of the proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code. Um, so what we're proposing here, uh, related to, uh, increase of, of dispensary size, um, secure storage, changes to that, and I'll go into detail of these once we get going here. Um, amendments to odor mitigation, uh, we're looking at drive-throughs and changes to drive-throughs. Um, we're looking at the new manufacturing use, um, amendments to some definitions and then reduce the separation, uh, um, from sensitive uses, uh, to be similar to kind of how we treat alcohol establishments. So, uh, dispensary size, um, current regulations are four thousand square feet, five hundred square feet for, for a secure storage area. Um, so the reason for this change, uh, with passage of Proposition two oh seven, um, it's really gonna, it could likely create spacing issues. Um, so what we're looking at here, initially we went to eight thousand, um, with a double, doubling of it and then, um, we had heard some stories about how four thousand wasn't enough. So, um, we ended up kind of looking to what they were doing in Tempe, um, and kind of giving it a little bit more of a buffer to allow for a little bit of flexibility on that. So we're, we are proposing, uh, ten thousand square feet, um, for this. And then we're, we're proposing to remove the limit on the secure storage, uh, which seemed, uh, I think it was one of those things that came out with the, um, there were security issues when the first model ordinance was there and it's kind of a holdover from back then, um, related to that. And that was, I, we, we believe that was the reason why that was included. Um, it did seem somewhat limiting. It, it definitely was limiting in the conversations we had, um, but it also seemed kind of arbitrary at five hundred square feet. Um, so that's the dispensary size, uh, odor mitigation. So odor mitigation, we currently have odor mitigation. It's just not, um, particularly clear on what is, it, it, it's not super clear on what's either required, um, but also, um, how we enforce this. So we have proposed, um, a couple of changes related to this, um, that allow for a, a bit of a feedback loop um, on the whole odor mitigation, uh, 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 issue. So, um, one, we've added some specificity in what needs to be included in the odor mitigation plan, um, when it's submitted. Um, and, and I will say for, uh, overall, uh, looking back on the odor mitigation plans that have been submitted, um, they are quite good. Um, but this, this, this helps for us to standardize it a little bit. Um, and then, um, adding in procedures on how to deal with, with complaints. So, um, one, uh, requirements for inspection, inspection for adherence to plan and effectiveness. So meeting, making sure that you're meeting those goals of the, um, of the odor mitigation plan. Um, and then a certain amount of time for the, uh, the operator to respond if they're, um, for, to those deficiencies. So, you know, amendments to that odor mitigation plan to, to possibly address that type of thing. So these, those, that's what those amendments are related to that. Try to address some of this. It's a very difficult issue. Um, and I, as you all likely know, um, it is a very personal thing too. Some people have really great senses of smell. Other people don't. So if you're very, very sensitive to smell, um, it's a much bigger issue to probably, um, a lot of other people who it doesn't really bother them that much. So, um, that's, that's kind of what we're, we're thinking with odor mitigation. Um, drive-throughs, this is one of those ones that was brought up by mayor and council. Um, currently drive-throughs are prohibited. It looks like they're prohibited elsewhere as well. Um, so this is one of those things where we started looking at the code and, and we, you know, one, there's the social distancing issue right now with COVID. Um, and I know COVID, you know, likely won't be as much of an issue hopefully in the future, um, but future pandemics could be as well. Um, and it was brought up that, that we should look at this. Um, what we looked at was the fact that basically we are being more restrictive on this one land use than we are for any other land use. Um, so we basically allow for seat, for drive-throughs in C two and C three zones. Um, and I think, you know, why aren't we treating it the same is kind of how we were thinking about it. So, um, with our amendments here, it would allow for medic, for marijuana dispensary to operate with a drive-through essentially, if, should they have that or want that. Um, manufacturing and standalone manufacturing, um, so again, as I had spoken to earlier, it's currently allowed, um, as an accessory used to a, to a dispensary or as part of an offsite cultivation land use. Just not very clear on, on where this manufacturing, um, is allowed. So what we're doing is we're, uh, proposing a brand new land use that is manufacturing and standalone manufacturing. Um, and it has the same regulations as our offsite cultivation, um, except for it would be allowed in our park industrial. Um, it seemed to be, um, in line with like, uh, with, um, kind of other kind of food manufact, food, uh, yeah, food production, that type of stuff, um, and so, which are also allowed in park industrial. So they allow for them in park industrial as well as I one and I two where the offsite cultivation, um, facilities would be allowed. And that's the manufacturing, a standalone manufacturing, um, changes to definitions. So this is really bringing it in line with, um, the new bill. Um, so it's making updates essentially instead of medical marijuana dispensaries and medical marijuana dispensary offsite cultivation, um, it's going to just a marijuana establishment. Um, and it would, it would incorporate, you know, it'd be the same regulations if you were just a standalone medical facility or a standalone, you know, or a dual use facility and that type of thing. Um, so the proposed changes, again, a combination of medical marijuana dispensary and then addition of that marijuana dispensary offsite manufacturing location. Um, so, um, beyond that, so those were kind of the initial set of changes that we had, had, had kind of proposed. Um, we have a couple of additional items kind of for your consideration that we would like to discuss with you. Um, you'll notice that we haven't made any specific, um, any specific code changes related to either of these in the proposal that we had given to you. So the, the, the idea here is that we would get your feedback and then follow up with you when we get into the public hearing based on your feedback. So, um, as you likely know, um, Arizona Department of Health Services began releasing licenses last month or a month and a half ago or so, and there were quite a few impacts, um, being experienced, um, on certain facilities, not all facilities. Um, and, uh, you know, we started kind of looking at things and realized that maybe, that maybe our regulations need to be adjusted in some other ways to try to address some of, some of these issues that are, that are, that we were seeing. So, um, those are related to separation distances and parking that we're going to talk about here. So, um, what we've noticed is that, you know, current separation distances really severely limit where dispensaries may locate. Um, what ends up happening, and we've seen this with a couple of facilities, um, is that, you know, many times it's forcing them into subpar locations, um, and then it has a greater impact on some of the surrounding areas. Um, and usually these are the facilities that are close to neighborhoods. Um, and, you know, Tucson has, has commercial that is right up next to residential neighborhoods sometimes, and, and a lot of times actually. Um, so it's forcing them into smaller, sub, suboptimal areas essentially. So I, I guess what our question was, you know, if we reduce some of these setback requirements, can we encourage dispensaries, especially if they're looking to expand because they can now go up to ten thousand square feet? Can we encourage these dispensaries to relocate into more appropriate areas? So, um, on the right are our current regulations for C two and C three zones. Um, we require a two thousand foot setback from any other dispensaries. We require a two thousand foot setbacks from licensed residential substance abuse diagnostic and treatment facilities, um, or other licensed residential drug and alcohol rehab facilities. Uh, we require a thousand foot setback from K twelve public, private or charter schools or a licensed pub, uh, childcare center, public park, church or library. Um, and then we require five hundred feet, um, from a school if expanding. Um, that was just related to, um, a, a tax amendment that happened back in two thousand and sixteen, I believe. Um, so we went through and did a, did a mapping analysis of this. This was in your packet, um, if you had taken a look at that. Um, oh, actually, before we get there, we did, we went and looked at some other communities as well, and this was also in your packet. Um, instead of looking at, at Arizona, which you haven't seen a lot of changes occur and most of them were based off that original model ordinance, uh, we went and looked at, um, other states that had legalized adult use recrea, or adult use or recreational, um, marijuana. And, um, these are kind of some similarly sized communities that we, um, in other, other areas. So Fort Collins had a thousand foot setback for schools and dispensaries, um, and a five hundred foot setback from childcare facilities, substance abuse facilities, parks and churches. Um, Denver, uh, had a thousand for schools, childcare facilities, substance abuse facilities and dispensaries. Um, Portland, Oregon, only, uh, they had a thousand for schools and dispensaries. Um, and then Olympia, uh, Washington had a thousand for schools and then five hundred feet for childcare facilities, public parks and libraries. One thing to note here is that, um, we have a, a, a much more significant limitation on the number of dispensaries in Arizona compared to some of those other communities. So there can be a lot more licenses distributed in those other communities. So that has some impact on that. Um, and then, uh, setback, and then we, we also wanted to give you kind of the, um, the setbacks for alcohol establishments, which we think is somewhat of a proxy for this, um, not entirely. Um, but these are, these are what our requirements are currently for any alcohol establishment. Um, and that, that is established by the state of Arizona, um, and those are three hundred foot setbacks from schools, um, and then the three hundred foot setback from churches. Um, and that's what, that's what they regulate related to that. So I'm just going to show you a couple of maps and we'll kind of see where we're at related to these. So this is if there were no setback requirements whatsoever. Um, this obviously can't happen because the state has a five hundred foot setback from schools. Um, but this is all of the C two and C three zones, um, in the city of Tucson. Um, there will, there are parcels that overlap with C two and C three zones, so there's some parcels that are much larger that probably have a portion of it. Um, but that's, that's where we're at there. Um, it's about eight, oh, almost nine thousand total parcels. Um, it is over eleven thousand acres of land, um, and they're generally reasonably sized. Um, this is our current regulation here, um, related to this. So this is with all of those setbacks that I had talked about previously. And it takes those eight thousand eight hundred or almost nine thousand down to about eleven hundred and fifty-seven parcels, um, and about four thousand acres of land. Um, and you'll see as, as, and all that blue, um, is where they can't locate. And the orange is where they can locate. Um, it really does limit them significantly on where they can go. Um, part of the problem that we're seeing right now is that, you know, we're probably better off because of the parking issues that have, that have been coming up and the traffic issues, um, for them to locate in, um, in shopping centers and things of that sort. Yet the setback, uh, is, is, is making it very difficult for them to find a, a reasonable site that would allow for them to, to minimize that impact. Um, so that's, that's the separation distance analysis. Um, the next one I have here is actually just what the state requires. So this is what we had, you know, we, we put in our packet for discussion. Um, we haven't, like I said, we haven't put any, anything down on, on, in, in our actual amendment or proposal. Um, but this is the five hundred feet from schools. So you can see it's, it's, it's a huge difference and there's a wide range here, um, related to the both of them. Um, but this is what it would be like. And again, it's, you know, the, it, it doesn't really, um, affect it much. Um, as far as eight thousand parcels instead of nine thousand and nine thousand acres of land essentially. So that's, that's that. There are some additional maps that I have, um, for discussion if we would like to talk about that. But we are looking for your feedback on this, um, and, 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 and how, and how to move forward, um, for our public hearing next week. Um, so, and then the other issue related that we did want to talk to you as well about is parking. Um, so again, this is part of the problem we have, you know, right now is just, um, with the influx of customers, it's creating, um, parking impacts on surrounding areas. It's definitely, it's happening a lot in more of the, the areas that are next to residential area. You know, if you know of the dispensary at the corner of, uh, Treat and Grant, um, that, that was the first one to open. It created a lot of problems initially. Um, they've been working with the city on, um, on setting up parking down the, down the road and having signage out there and things of that sort. Um, but it's a two, you know, it's a twenty-three hundred square foot facility. It's meeting its parking requirements. Um, but with the amount of volume that's there, it's just, it's having a, a significant impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, so the question really is here is, is, should we, you know, increase those requirements for parking? So the question really is here is, should we, you know, increase those requirements for parking? And and what would be what would be the issue related to that? So currently, we park dispensaries at the same rate that we do for for retail and for retail centers. So it's 100 to 300 square feet of gross floor area. And which, you know, is similar to other retail uses, and it may be more intense, it may not be. We're not sure at this point. There was that influx, but it's definitely come back a little bit. But there are some some issues related to to making that change. One is that you make a whole bunch of legally non-conforming uses out of the existing dispensaries that are out there, which means they can't expand without without, you know, finding all of this additional parking, things of that sort. Another issue, you know, related to this is just the fact that we, you know, we're we're we want to right-size it. We don't want to necessarily provide for too much parking and all the imperious surface that comes along with that, right? So one thing that we were thinking that that related to this is the fact that by expanding that size from 4,000 to 10,000 or whatever it is, that one, you would draw them out of their current place into another place, and then they would have to provide parking for that full facility, which would allow for them to expand the parking and should hopefully address some of those issues related to parking that we are currently seeing with the smaller facilities that are dealing with lots of volume. So that's kind of where we're at with our proposals. We are looking for your feedback related to that, and we will take any questions that you may have related to this. We are looking to, we've noticed this this item for next week. So because of the time crunch and the fact that the state started issuing licenses so soon, there is really a bit of pressure to kind of get this done to allow for to allow for those regulations to be in place. So that would be a public hearing next week on March 17, 2011, or 2012, 21. Sorry, I'm 10 years off. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Point of order, I think Commissioner Cassidy was not here for roll call, but I thought I saw her on the list of participants.
Yes, I'm here. I was about four minutes late for the meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I think you're one of the eight that Dan's counting, so.
I'm very sure.
I'd like to open it up for any questions from the commission for staff related to the presentation.
I see Commissioner Fink has his hand up.
And then I guess Commissioner McBride next after Commissioner Fink.
Okay, hold on. I'm so computer illiterate with this sometimes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Before I make my comments, I have one question for Daniel, which is how approximately how many licenses do we think there would be for the city? And then if you know for also for the county as well. But for that, and I don't know if you would know that, but for the city, about how many are we looking at?
So Commissioner Fink, so basically, it's it's limited to the total for the state. So currently, we have currently we have, I believe, it's 13 in the city. We, there is the potential for relocation from elsewhere to the city of Tucson. So we could potentially get a couple more that way. And then, again, the social equity licenses that will be coming up. We're looking at 26 statewide, so two, three, four more. So total, I think you're still going to be under under 20. And that's, I think that's a high, that's a that's a high estimate.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I bring that up is, one, just in general, I'm very much in favor of reducing the setbacks, the distancing requirements, I think for the most part. They're really, I don't really see the point of them. And whereas, let's say, in California, I know initially when marijuana was legal in California, there was an issue that so many dispensaries near each other. That's not going to happen here. I can't see everybody wanting to locate next to each other when there's a whole large city and a larger region to draw people from. That just wouldn't make very good sense. If I was to go open up a dispensary, I wouldn't want to open up next door to another one. I think this is similar to liquor stores. So I think in terms of parking, what do we require for parking? It's kind of, you go in, you come out, you might spend a little bit of time trying to figure out what kind of product you want to buy. But it's the same as going to a liquor store. But I feel with the distancing requirements outside of maybe schools and maybe drug rehab centers, I'm not sure what we're protecting people from. If you have a next near a childcare center where they're they're not even elementary school age, I don't see a whole bunch of four-year-olds going to your local marijuana dispensary to buy product. Oh, I'm not sure what the issue is there. And clearly with churches, I don't know what's sensitive about churches, particularly as opposed to residential areas, that we have to require setbacks from churches. I mean, I'd be more concerned if a church moved in next door to me than I would be that a marijuana dispensary moved near a church. So I commend staff for looking at reducing the the separation distances. I think it's a good idea. And I just think in general, some of these, you know, from libraries and churches and parks, it's kind of a a knee-jerk reaction to, oh, these are somehow very sensitive and some negative impacts will occur if somebody drives up and buys some gummies and then go go home. I'm not sure what's going to happen. So I would recommend, for sure, limiting, I wouldn't even have separation requirements from churches. And I wouldn't really care about dispensaries because I don't think they'll locate near each other. And I think the only ones that I would really think make sense would be maybe schools. We have to because that's a state requirement. And maybe drug rehab centers. Otherwise, I don't see a problem at all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fink, Commissioner McBride Olson.
Yeah, I just, Daniel, I just want you to clarify what what you're thinking about for proposed revisions of the setbacks, because the only one I'm seeing in the overview statement is to reduce the setback to 500 feet from the schools. And I'm probably missing a missing information somewhere that shows what other proposed setbacks you were going to reduce.
So Commissioner.
And if and if schools are the only place you're reducing the setbacks, I guess I'd want to have more thinking on why why you would reduce it there and not other places.
So Commissioner McBride Olson, so basically what we presented to you is what the state requires, which is the 500 for schools. We wanted to get your feedback as a commission on or direction really on what we should look at for other reductions. If you look at, and I'm going to just pull this up real quickly here, I had hidden these slides. But it really, and this is in your in your materials. It it's such a, we can have so many different kind of combinations of these. We really wanted to see what you believe makes sense essentially, kind of kind of as as Commissioner Fink had done. So this one right here is basically just looking at a 500-foot buffer from every, from all of the the ones that we currently have. So it's taking all of them, bringing them all down to 500 feet. So it doesn't have nearly as many as as many open spots as just going to 500 for schools, but, you know. And then this one right here is, let's see, this, I think this is, oh, this is having everything except for drug rehab centers. So that's one that we we had looked at. And then this one's just basically taking everything and reducing it in half and seeing what you get. So basically, we just, we we want to get your feedback, and then we'll take that feedback and come back to you with a more solid kind of proposal related to this with text.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any other commissioners that have questions for staff?
I just, I'd like to make a comment. In the interest of time, I just, Commissioner Fink said everything that I think I would have said, so I certainly support that, and and we'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Chair Martin, Commissioner Ortiz-Pino.
Thank you. I also kind of want to second Commissioner Fink's remarks. But I want to clarify what the setbacks are for the alcohol sales, if there was alcohol sales in liquor stores or if it was inclusive of bars.
Yes, it it would include bars, but it also includes, it's basically for our liquor license. So in order to get your liquor license, you have to be setback 300 feet from, what is it? It's churches and schools.
Okay, so to the point I wanted to make there was, you know, and I think Commissioner Fink made it as well. You know, there's not going to be any consumption on the premises in these dispensers. There's not going to be the same risk that you would have as, say, someone inebriated coming into the bar, being close to schools or churches or any of those other places that, you know, we'd want for public enjoyment. And so I don't really understand why we have much stricter setbacks. I would, you know, I kind of understand school that, I know that's a state mandate, but I would say reduce most of them, if not all, to the what the state requires.
Yeah, and Commissioner Ortiz-Pino, the reason why Tucson setbacks were so big to begin with was Tucson was an early adopter of medical marijuana regulations. So at the time, the council was conservative on the setback because the public hadn't really accepted marijuana as a matter of course yet. So here we are, I think 11 years later, the voters have authorized this. And when you're, I believe your analysis is correct. Why are we still treating this different than we would, for example, a pharmacy or a liquor store? So that's the result of Dan's research you're seeing now. But I believe the lowest we can go is the state requirements of 500 feet. So that's where we're at in the analysis.
And yeah, I definitely agree with that.
Thank you. Any other commission members have comments or questions? I guess hearing none. With the completion of the discussion, I'm going to open this up for a motion to set this for a public hearing on March 17, 2021.
Mark, Commissioner Fink, is your hand back up or they never came down?
Commissioner Fink, you're you're muted. I'm sorry.
So while he figures that out, I had, I did have one other question. What is, what are the odds of the possibility that Arizona Department of Health Services, you know, comes out with their licensure for social equity licenses sooner than anticipated? You know, I think you mentioned December earlier. I think they released the dual-use licensers in January, totally unexpected. Is there a possibility that they're kind of going to run this through as fast as possible? And we'd be caught off guard with where we are at in the regulation of land uses and the new licenses coming in?
So, yeah, I I think that ultimately, I don't know if we really know what the timeline is for it. So, I mean, they do have that, they 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 are, considering they that they distributed the they started distributing the adult use license, I think it was a month and a half after the vote was certified. It is entirely possible that that could, that could happen. But I think as of now, we're just unsure as to what the timeline is related to that. Okay.
Commissioner Fink.
I guess, yeah, I guess I would make a motion to set this for public hearing. I don't know, and I think there's, we've seen direction to look at reducing the the separation or the setbacks to as low as possible, given state law. But I would definitely, I mean, it's makes certainly makes sense for us to set this for public hearing.
Commissioner McBride Olson, did you have a question or comment?
I I did. So in setting it for public hearing, what are we saying about setbacks?
I think we're instructing staff to come back with a presentation at this public hearing.
Okay, all right.
That's kind of where you got, Daniel?
Yeah, so so what we can do is, from the from the motion, it sounds like we would come back with a proposal of what the state requires. We did get some feedback related to substance abuse facilities. So what we may do is is provide an option of that as well when we come back.
Could you refresh me on what what the setback is currently in Tempe for schools?
I I only have the previous one. I don't have the information related to what it is now. So it looks like they had a mile from another dispensary, 1,500 from childcare facilities and schools, and then 13, is that a quarter mile? I think quarter mile from church park and residential zones. What we can do is we can come back and see what they changed it and and provide that to you when we come back in a week.
Okay.
May I have a second?
Again.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz-Pino. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor recommending this item be set for a public hearing on March, sorry, March 17, 2021, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The medical and adult use marijuana UDC text amendment is now set for a public hearing on March 17, 2021. I think that gets us to item number seven, adjournment. Recommend a motion for adjournment.
Excuse me, whoa, one second. Dan, did you put call to the audience on this agenda?
I think we're going to go to the next one.
So I I actually revised the agenda. There is a revised agenda with calls to the audience. So yes, we need to.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
That's okay, I caught it.
Thank you, Scott.
I guess now we'll have called the audience. For anybody that would like to comment on, it has to be items other than this, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we can't speak to this item here. It has to be something else on another agenda item, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, so so I need to wait till the public hearing to state my comments and opinions.
That's correct. No, that'll be that'll be next week on Wednesday at 6 o'clock.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else stand?
It appears Raquel has her hand up. I'm not sure if she would like to speak.
Raquel Benaro, I think if you're wanting to talk, you'll need to unmute yourself. So Raquel, we we can't hear you, so I don't, there you, it looks like you're unmuted now, so please go ahead and continue. I do not hear.
I don't either.
Any other members of the audience that'd like to speak to items not on the, not item two or three or four on tonight's agenda? Well, seeing none, I guess we can move to item seven. Well, seeing none, I guess we can move to item seven, the, well, I guess maybe it's eight now, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move re-adjourn.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. Uh, any, any discussion? All those in favor recommending adjournment, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Uh, thank you for the two new commissioners, because without you, you, we wouldn't have had a quorum, so, uh, we did that once before and it's not, not fun, so. Uh, hope to see everybody next week on the next Zoom meeting and maybe in a couple of months we'll meet in person, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job, Dan. Thanks a lot.